Unless you want to, you want to handle this, Brian? You're here, you're the chairman.
Uh, yeah, maybe, uh, of course, you're pretty, uh, you could move through it pretty quick. Let me try it. Okay, uh, uh, Members present will be our three supervisors and, and Carissa. Anyone else in there?
Jim DePeters just walked in.
Yeah.
Hi, Brian.
Are you, are you kidding me?
No, he's really here. He just walked in.
Oh my God. Uh, I'll, I'll handle it. I better handle it from, uh, remote.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so we'll start our meeting as, as you said, Robert, at 4:01. And, uh, we do have, uh, do we have any minutes that we want to look at and approve, I think?
Yeah, we do have minutes, uh, for March 30th.
We have the minutes, uh,
Oh, yeah, from the 24th. They're the ones I took from our emergency meeting.
Yep. And, uh, I had an opportunity to take a look at them and I would be, uh, happy to motion that we approve those minutes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, under new business?
Yes.
Motion to approve and sign the written decision of, uh, regarding Becky L. Freeman. Again, uh, Ron did a good job and he got out at the time we managed, so, uh, I, I for one have no problem with it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve and sign it then.
Okay, all right. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we just got a bill in, but I tell you, this is the, uh, to approve the 20, 20, 20, 21 Superheat proposal in the amount of $3,800. I told it itself approximately $200 over last year. Uh, and I, I checked with Terry, I checked with Lynn, and, uh, they don't, so far, we haven't had any problems with Superheat. They're fairly responsive. They are good, well, responsive. We have a contract that they, they visit us four times a year, uh, to do maintenance and change filters. And, uh, again, it seems to be, they seem to be doing the job we expect of them. So, I make a motion that we approve that, uh, their new contract for 2021 at a price of $3,800.
Second.
Okay.
Aye. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, those to be paid, I did go over them with Lynn. She sent me a, a copy of the bills. Robert, Jacob, do you have any, uh, any, anything pop up by you guys on the bills to be paid?
No, they, they looked fine when I looked at them too.
Yeah, I figured that. Uh, well, they have, uh, you have a motion to pay the bills or do you have to pay the bills?
I'll second it.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a, a matter, we did do this, uh, I was, I was thinking of ratifications, but we did that last week in the meetings as our special meeting. But I know that I got a number for, for the resolution number. Uh, but I'll check that out tomorrow first thing.
Okay.
All right? And then we're good to go with that. That just gets put in the book and we're on, we're on our way.
Uh, I guess the only other thing was we were going to add, just because of kind of a clerical mis, uh, mishap here, that the, um, the applications for the, the job of township, uh, what is it, uh, office manager?
Office manager.
Will close at 5:00 on April 30th.
Oh, you want 5?
Well, I don't know, whatever.
I think we have 4 at, at, uh, the 30th.
4 on the 30th.
And the reason for that is there's nobody here after 4, I don't think, so.
Right, well, originally it was the 29th, which is going to be our meeting, but, um,
Yeah.
So, we could leave it there or we could change it, but I don't care.
I don't, I don't personally have a preference. Just whatever we decide, I'll, I'll re, I'll, um, add that to the file that I give to Lois. Cause I, I had a PDF sent to her. Like I just messaged you both.
Yeah.
That way she has it in PDF and Word, just in case the printer, you know.
Well, it probably is better if we left it the 29th, only because then we could discuss it in our meeting. It's 4 o'clock, right? In with the V.
Yeah.
Coincide with the VOS support session.
That's, that's,
That sounds good.
Yeah, that's perfect. So, we make it 4 o'clock?
Right, well, that, that's already in there, so I can, isn't it? Is it a?
Well, yeah, I'll just, I'll just, I'll make sure it's right on.
So, we don't have to, we don't have that motion.
No.
All right.
Oh, and one, one more thing before we get to, to Jim. Um, Brian, since only you and I were at the meeting, we're the only ones who can sign the conditional use, uh, decision that Ron wrote. Do you want to?
I'll be in tomorrow.
Okay, so you'll, you'll sign it, sign a copy of it and then I'll, I'll sign that one.
Perfect. But if you want to, leave it on my desk, uh, Jacob?
Yeah.
I'll sign it and I'll get it right over to your desk.
Okay, sounds good.
Good, and, and again, we'll get the number for it, the resolution number.
Okay, I guess, um, anything else? Any comments?
Just a, a couple of things. Uh, the ad going in the paper, I, I, I think we should, uh, number one, that, uh, suggested or recommend that we go to the morning call. I really, but it's, they ain't cheap, but it's still live. We gotta, we gotta reach out for that.
I think both the, the public record and the morning call.
And, and the morning, yeah, we gotta do the public record too.
Yeah, I think both sound fine to, to me.
Yeah, I saw that and appreciate that.
And I, and now that we have this thing, I can get it on our Facebook then.
Beautiful, great.
Okay.
Yeah, but good.
Okay, I guess, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn? There's nothing else here on this agenda?
I, no, there's no sense going on if we don't have to, right?
Right?
Right.
Okay. Uh, so I'll make that motion to adjourn.
All right.
Well, wait a second. If Jim, if Jim is really there?
Yes.
He is?
Do you have any new business or just?
Uh, I, I would say, uh,
Update.
Let's, let's not close again. Let's not close this, uh, session yet. Jim, can you hear me?
I sure can, Brian, loud and clear.
Clear, that's really good to hear. Are you there, are you with Doug or yourself or?
That's myself. It's myself today.
All right. Uh, and you had a, uh, uh, you had a, uh, something that you wanted to talk, talk to us about formally? Formally, whichever way?
Right. So, we, um, at this point, we are getting a lot of momentum. Um, and we, we, I think we've shown some elevations and, uh, Brian, I'll give these two gentlemen a copy that'll be here, here when you come in. I guess Brian's got, like, uh, so we're going to deliver a project to Smithfield that really is going to be a true gateway. Um, it's just going to be magnificent, um, with, uh, higher end apartments. Uh, we've gotten great reaction on them. Um, and, you know, we're, we're faced now with a situation where we have some of these things that are occurring that we must accelerate our, our process as much as possible. So, a couple of things that have happened very promising. One is that, you know, the, the key to this whole program are, are funding the road improvements, right? I mean, they're astronomical. Um, we got, thanks to Chuck Leonard's group, we got some grants. Um, our group has put in millions of dollars. Um, we also were able to organize this TIF, right? Tax Increment Financing. Uh, that component, had two components, two, you know, blocks of funding. One was from the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank, which is a PennDOT bank.
Yeah.
And that document now is fully negotiated. It's in Harrisburg. And of course, it's kind of stuck in, you know, what's going on right now. But we're, hopefully, in a month or so that it'll get out of there and fund. Uh, and that's for 3.5 million. And that will allow us to ignite the improvements.
And, and Jim, you still, you have the, uh, multimodals too also?
Yes, we do. Um, and the other, um, funding, it was 2.5 million because it was a 6 million TIF. That had to been funded privately. Um, and, uh, we talked to a lot of banks. And the difficulty was that Pitt, Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank, had first tranche at the money, at the tax money. That was, that's what they wanted. So, basically, uh, finally, just last week, and I, I went to all of our lenders and I said, guys, and we have about four different banks who have lent us money to buy this site from Charlesburg. I went to all of them, I said, hey, guys, listen, we're all in the same boat together. If, if I get these improvements and put these roads in, we're, we're great. But if not, you know, we have basically a piece of real estate that myself or anybody, you or anybody can't develop. So fortunately, last week, I got a term sheet for that 2.5 million dollars, which was really good news. And we're going to, uh, negotiate that in the next, you know, 30 days it should be done. It does require a significant payment down on the existing mortgage, uh, mortgages. Um, because what we did is we put them all together and all these banks had different components. One guy had, you know, this piece, one guy had another piece. But what they're doing now is putting a coalition together of all the banks. Um, so, uh, what, uh, to do that, we have to fund this large sum of money, which we'll be able to do. But we really need to be able to make sure that we show that we have a real project that can get built. Obviously, that's where the zoning comes into effect, right? That's number one. The other thing is, and I'll, I'll, this, this was tremendous news last week that we got. I, I had a great week. I had a great week. This is a, a document from HUD. HUD is, uh, now, by the way, when people say HUD, they normally cringe because they get low income. This is a high-end multifamily, um, uh, financing vehicle that you have to get invited into. Um, and it's not easy. Last week, we officially got invited to proceed, okay, with that. And I think that we did because of, A, the site, the studies that were done. Uh, our partner is a very deep pocket. Um, and third is I really put together a great team, okay? So, um, you know, basically, they said to us, and you can see by the level of sophistication of that document, I mean, this is federal. This is soup to nuts. Gotta be on the ball. But they also, they also say in there, Jim, we're, we're going to give you the opportunity, but don't, you can't sit on this or we're going to pull it back, all right? So, that's another piece of great news that I got last week. The other is that we are negotiating right now with a 40,000 square foot medical user who we signed the letter of intent with. Uh, they've agreed to pay taxes because, as you know, a lot of these users like to come in and then they say, oh, we're tax exempt, right? But the arrangement is, and it's in writing, they will pay taxes because it's instrumental for our TIF to do that, right?
And they will pay taxes?
They will pay taxes. It's part of the deal. I cleared that right from the beginning. Now, they've given us though, and I would just tell you that by the end of '21, I've got to deliver the building to them, right? Which sounds like a long time away, but when you consider all the road work we got to do, let alone the onsite work, it's not. We got to be building, delivering the roads and then delivering their building, okay? And, and that's a, a very serious point with that because they do have other areas that they're consolidating some spaces to. Um, not in Smithfield, but, you know, it's, it's very important that they get this building when I say they're going to get, okay? Um, so we have all this really, really positive momentum that is happening. We had an hour and a half conference call with PennDOT this past Monday. Um, and basically, that phone call was conference because, you know, we really haven't meetings too much, okay? Do appreciate, you know, this opportunity, but, um, basically, they are being flexible, much more so than they normally would, and are encouraging us to proceed now and get into final stages of, of our permitting process, okay?
Uh, Jim, was that a conference call with Melissa Moplin and her group?
More important, Brian Boyer, yes.
And Brian Boyer, her boss?
Who's willing to have that.
Yeah, they were going to invite us to that. We wanted to really be a part of that. Jacob and I sat with, with both of them. And they assured us that they, we would be included.
Uh, I thought, Doug, well, we conferenced a lot, uh, networked. It was really an, an update meeting and I'll mention that to Doug. And we'll make sure, you know, next time if there is a follow-up meeting, uh, that you guys will, will definitely be, be invited to. But it wa, it was good news, um,
Jim, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
With the delivery of this, uh, medical facility, is it in any way conditional about the PennDOT work being done or?
Oh, yeah.
Why couldn't it be still in process? I mean, you know, you only got a year and a half.
Well, we've had some serious right-of-way issues that are just now resolved. Without mentioning names, but there was a real unfortunate situation with one of the key right-of-ways that set us back. But, uh, because PennDOT mandates that you must have all the control of all your right-of-way situations. So, um, you know, we, we were proceeding, you know, with that. Um, and, and of course, they were delighted to hear that, you know, our, our funding is coming intact. A large part of that funding though is a multimodal that they have. So, part of our discussions were, you know, who doesn't, you know, they seem to want to control 209, which is fine with us. We've got plenty of work to do here, right?
Yeah, that's true. They do want to, they want to actually override it, overstay it.
Right.
Uh, are we going to have two or one light on 209 as it stands now?
At this point, one light.
One light?
And a right-in, right-out and a left-in. Although that could change, but, um, you know, that would just require some additional landowners to come to the table. So, the one thing that, you know, and we, uh, we have worked successfully when we went through the first process with the planning commission, we, we got a, a neutral vote, which was good. It allowed us, you know, proceed here with the supervisors. And you, of course, approved our, our preliminary land development plan several years ago. And we're, we're, we're not sure what agenda they're going to have, if they're going to have a meeting. Probably not a meeting, maybe a phone conference on April 9th is the next meeting.
I think they'll have a meeting.
Our Charlie Schmell has been working on this zoning. I really think we're about 80 to 90% consistent with your new ordinance.
Right.
All right? But to deliver that picture that I've said to you in, in our plan is not everything. And we're not sure if they're going to involve their planner. We would be fine, okay, if that's the case. But I think the point I wanted to express here was that we've really got to get into it. And if they're going to bring their planner in, so be it, let's do it. And we got to move it through the process and bring this in front of the supervisors within the next couple of months. I cannot be at the end of the year or in late fall talking zoning. I got to be talking about construction.
Let me ask, Brian, from, from what I understood of the, the last group of members I saw, um, we're, we're now waiting for the County Planning Commission to approve the changes we made?
Well, we didn't make any changes, uh, actually. We submitted to them what Charlie Schmell said, submitted to us.
Right.
And they're taking a look and, and I guess that the whole thing is that we, unintended consequences. We got to be very careful in that respect. But they're looking at it and, uh, we'll see what they come back, come back with, yeah.
Well, they said they'd be, they'd, uh, get back to us by the end of the month, wasn't that it?
Uh, I don't know if that's specific, but they said that they'd give it top priority.
Are you talking about gateway specific or are you talking about the overall news?
Gateway specific, yeah. Oh, and, and then the, the overall ordinance, uh, I shared Eric Koeman's, uh,
Right, right, that's what I was saying.
And what he said was, uh, yeah, we got to go, we got to go through it, but we'll expedite it, we'll get it done in the very near future. And, and that would be the major revisions to our ordinance.
Yeah.
The, uh, the, the middle that Charlie Schmell gave to us, we gave to them also. So, they're going to be looking at that.
Now, on,
And I would,
There was some sense though, Brian, from the planning commission that, and I understand this, uh, you know, we've worked on this new ordinance, okay? And, you know, why can't you do that? Okay, well, we can't do that if we like this plan. And all of these timings come together. This HUD, when you read that, in order to process that package, okay? Um, it, it's not just a site plan. It's about, probably overall, about 700, 800,000 dollars worth of archi, they want full architecturals. Well, you know, we can't do that until we have the zoning. Once we have the zoning, we can turn that up, right? It, it kind of relates to our improvement loan. We're not going to get that unless we have the zoning. So, all these points deal with, back to this point.
And I think, I think your infrastructure is going to be critical. And that's why I really was hoping to sit in on that meeting. Uh, as we did up in, uh, Toby Hannah. Uh, I guess it's now, about two years ago, Jim.
Nothing has changed, Brian, with the, everything is, you know, is there. I mean, is, is intact. I mean, the, the, the plans are the same. Um, we, we've shared, I think in the past, I knew Doug came to a meeting that, you know, our funding builds, uh, three quarters of the Loop Road. We anticipate that finishing up on the 447 in, 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 in the next building season. PennDOT is aware of that? Okay, but that's what it's at, I mean, we're,
What about that Appalachian Trail Grant thing? He's been applying for it.
They, uh, they're, we, we couldn't do it in that, in, in that time schedule. We can reapply. They were very interested in helping us, but that, that's a future, you know, that's something we tackle next year.
That was critical to doing the whole Loop Road.
But, but we're doing all new trap, they've requested all new traffic studies. So, there'll be all new traffic studies dealing with, you know, what we can handle with our first phase, with our second phase. We recognize that. You can't, you know, without everything done, you know, do everything. So, so I guess the main thing that I wanted just to relay is, is that um, we really want to do a quality project. We're happy to work with the planning commission. We've always been that way. But we sort of want to, you know, let them know through you that we really would like to get into it as quickly as possible and move to, you know, get something done.
We, it's, if, when you're ready, we will try to facilitate that if it's on a conference.
And let me just say, Jim, we're all, we're all on skeletal forces. Uh, could matter indifferently. And we are in a situation, like, the people that we rely on are probably doing a lot of the same stuff, okay? They're working remotely, uh, they're, they're responding, but not as quickly as normal. And, and that includes us, you know, like, here I am, I sit in there.
Yeah.
But we would, uh,
Will the, will the planning commission have a, a Skype meeting or where they plan? How do we?
We'll encourage them to do that.
Yeah. Okay, that would be,
I don't think they thought that in far ahead.
Yeah.
I think we already did, actually, Robert, I think that, that we, well, we got two items before them. We got the item for, you know, for the, uh, ordinance updating general. And they'll get back to us and then it'll go to their board, which is mandated. And then it'll get back to us as a recommendation. So, have that and then your Charlie Schmell will be taking a look at that and seeing how and what he'd be suggesting to do would be, follow those,
Right.
Those guidelines. How about the school? How you doing with the school? You talking to them?
You mean the school board?
Yes, yes.
So, we, um, reached a, I think, a happy meeting there where we've agreed to de-restrict the three TIF phases, um, which would be 1A, which is where the medical user is going. Uh, 1B, which is where the multifamily and the specialty retail is going. That, there's 236 apartments that were zoned for that section, they remain. And then there's the Phase 2A, which is the site on the hill, which we're planning to do, um, age-restricted housing. Um, but, so we, you know, they were concerned.
That would be the, the order that you would approach it?
Um,
And, and that, and the 2A would be the third?
I think 1A, 1A and 1B would be going somewhat simultaneous with the site on the hill probably being a little bit afterwards. We are talking to one really good quality builder. We're happy, we're struggling, you know, senior housing. And I've been told there's a great market for it here in terms of, you know, over 55 housing. The problem is, is that you can't have steps. So, we've been struggling with trying to lay that site out on the hill without a lot of steps because, you know, if you buy a house when you're 57, you want to plan maybe a living on it for 20 years or so. And, uh, you know,
Is there an adult-only designation or is it illegal now?
Oh, no, federal, federal guidelines, federal guidelines for, for that, yes.
For adult?
I think it's 80%. It's 80/20.
80/20 what, for an adult?
For a, yeah, for a senior. What I believe, and I'm not an expert, is that for, um,
I'm not talking about,
Age-restricted community, age-restricted, um, it's, federal guidelines are 80/20. You, I don't think you can say totally not, okay?
Okay, so you're saying the 80 is the age restricted?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
80% will be age-restricted of the,
Well, maybe you're better off there, then it's not over 55.
Well, no, it is, age-restricted is over 55.
Well, I'm just saying adults only, if there is an adult-only designation.
I don't think there is.
Because if you do that, that would satisfy the,
Whatever the fact, I mean, you know, we're going to do, we want to do as much adult as we can. But we've expressed it, they're planning to the school board and, you know, they were concerned, but I don't think they're concerned anymore, uh, because of what we've said. We said, look, you know, we'll put it in ready, we'll put it in the deed. So, if something happens to me, you don't have to worry about it, okay? So, they seem comfortable, you know? Uh, you know, with, with that.
Well, Jim, you've got a lot on your plate. You've got a lot of things you got to put in order and, and, and of course, you've got sewer authority. I guess you're, you're, you're working well with them and you're,
Well, we're going to go, it's a good, glad you mentioned that, Brian, because we now have to go back to them because of the changes, you know, with, with the,
Oh, yeah.
So, we're, we're actually putting together some correspondence, um, with, with the MUA there and finalizing that.
Okay.
And that, that's going to require expansion of the, of the pump station that's there. Um, you know, we're having conversations with Mr. Kirkwood about that.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
Right now, it's just being,
They're continuing.
Yes. But anyway, I just wanted to express that. We're, we're, we've had, we had a great week. We got a great momentum.
Great.
And unfortunately, this terrible, you know, disease has hit and it's, it's, uh, made it very difficult to communicate and everything. But, um, we've got momentum, we want to keep it going. And maybe perhaps you could find out how we can communicate with the planning commission.
Well, we, we'll find that out.
Yeah.
We'll just get hold of, of Scott and find out what the story is. And I, I see no reason why they shouldn't hold a Zoom meeting.
Right.
We're all, we're all getting used to Zoom now.
Yes, that's right. And I, I just want to repeat, I really believe that, that our plan conforms to a very, very high percentage of the new ordinance. But it just may not be everything, but if you like what we're talking about, it's a very,
Well, that would be Charlie and, and, and our, our engineer and the planning commission.
Yes. Or do you know, are they planning to utilize their planner? There is a planner that was involved that has, now? Okay. There, it got mentioned the last time, uh, we were here that perhaps they were going to involve the planning commission.
Did they mention, like, the county planning commission planner? Cause they have one, but we, we don't have one.
That may have been mentioned, I can't remember.
Yeah.
The, the county planning commission has a solicitor and an engineer. They don't have a planner. They can go out like we do and, and, and engage somebody, subcontract with them, I guess, whatever. But most of their stuff is in-house and, and that's why I'm, I'm saying that it,[1751.82] But most of their stuff is in-house, and that's where I'm saying that they're, they're on a skeletal force at best, and there's a shitload of stuff. The sad news is, things were starting to really not even take up, but they were jumping up. And now this, this COVID-19 hits us, and it's, it's set us back a little bit, Jim. So you've got to be tolerant of that, too.
No, I am, and I just, you know, with our need to solidify the remaining road funding, we can't do that without the zoning done. Which is solidify our tenant, we can't do that without, and we can't certainly, you know, close this HUD.
It is done, it was done, but the change you're making now, as they say, it's just an unintended consequence. And that's what we're looking to do, to do our own due diligence, to make sure that we don't do something.
Well, it is, I have to tell you, you know what they say, sometimes they say the deals you don't make become your best deals? I mean, we fought so hard to bring ShopRite to this spot. And when they started talking to them all, we actually went to their board saying, what are you doing? What are you doing? But they were just dead set. Well, it just turns out that, I think in the, in the long run, we've got a plan that is much more attractive, you know, going to bring a quality development, beautiful construction, parking is better. So, you know, like I said, the end result, I think it's good, but it, it obviously was a setback for us, and I think we rebounded, we just got to keep it going.
Well, we're with you, I, I know that, I can speak only for myself, Jim, but I just know that this, this virus thing is, you understand what's going on in Monroe County alone, don't you?
I did, I saw the headlines.
I'd stay out of here if I were you.
I know.
We're all six feet away from each other.
My daughter was calling me all the way up, I didn't take her call.
I think we should have a new model, better, better six feet away than six feet under.
Yeah, that's right.
There you go, I like that.
I know, so.
Brian, how long do we need to announce for a public meeting for passing the zoning ordinance?
Not, not long at all. And as I said, you saw the message, just shared it with you and Jacob, he's got, and he said the same thing, he said, look, and I'm working from home, there's one staff, skeletal staff, and, and to get this together, do it the way that they're mandated to do it, is not going to be as quick as, as it was. When I served as the vice chair of that board, I, I felt that, that they were in good times. We got things done that really benefited Jim and his project, and we got them done in a very timely manner. They're still telling me they'll do the same for us, so let's keep our fingers crossed, follow it up. Jacob is a good reminder, he reminds me every day if I talk to Eric. And I appreciate it, and, and continue with that, and I'll do that, Jacob, we just got the message yesterday. And I, I think we're, we're sitting on Wednesday now, early next week, Jacob, remind me, please, I'll make my note, too. Robert?
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, they're, they're accepted, there's no negativity involved in that.
It's not like, gentlemen, I'm saying that I have to have this, you know, in April. Yeah, but I do, I can't engage John Cote to re-engineer the site until we get past the zoning, right? So I've got a couple of months. But if we're talking about zoning in September, October, I'm going to lose my tenant, I'm going to lose my financing, and I'm right back to where I was, so that's what.
Well, Jim, you're making me feel bad.
No, no, don't feel bad, you guys have been great, no, you have been wonderful, I couldn't, you're tremendous. I'm just saying that I just want the planning commission, I guess the word is focus, focus, you know?
All right.
That's all I can say.
Are you back in the, in the, in the group?
Yep.
What, what? What about the group?
Yeah, Langen Engineering, John Cote.
Oh, right, Becker.
Oh, yeah, John, I think we have a great CI, this architectural firm, and they're, they're, they're great, so now we have a really good team. I just appreciate the time here, and I'm just really enthused about keeping the ball going.
Absolutely.
A lot of good things happened last week, and want to, want to keep that up.
And Jim, how about the, the stormwater line crossing 209? Everything is in good order there?
Yes, as soon as Mr. Ricobono needs to sign his easement, Doug is handling that, I think we're on the one-yard line. And we have the funding in place from the LSA, that should take place now. And that, that we will require a definitely workshop with PennDOT on, because obviously, that's going to be disruptive when that goes in on that road. And I've never experienced that, but I'm sure PennDOT has, and, you know, there's ways to divert traffic and, you know, et cetera, but that's a big deal.
Do you have to wait for the governor's directive to expire?
Oh, yes, yeah, that's, well, that's right, we can't, we can't do it, we can't do anything.
Because that's what we've been talking about, is, you know.
Very good.
There's, Little Smithfield's putting up their new community center, but that had to stop because they needed onsite inspection.
Jacob has a very good point, so, God, well, it stopped because you're right, I mean, there's no construction going on anywhere, so, so hopefully, by the time we button down some things in a couple of months, that, that'll be lifted and going.
Hopefully.
Jim, when will you, when will, we'll begin, I know, with PennDOT, they're specking it out.
They won't build till next year. They won't build till next year, till, till April of next year. So we're going to use the balance of this year for the permitting process. You know, there's, because, because this is an EMS, meaning their funds, there's what normally is a lot of paperwork is now a tremendous lot of paperwork. And it's, it's going to take a little time to, for them to go through that, environmental reports, et cetera. So, but, but one of the questions I said to Brian on the phone call Monday, I said, Brian, you know, if you start in April, are you going to have a finished road so I can get a certificate of occupancy for my anchor tenant come November, December? And he said, yes, we'll be there.
So who said that?
Brian Boyer, Brian Boyer.
Okay, Brian Boyer, that's Moses' fault.
Yeah, so in other words, they can build it in one season, they can build it in one, in one season. So that's important. But we'll, for sure, when we have some further communication with them, I'll get to you, Brian, and you guys definitely participate.
I really would appreciate it, as I said, when Jacob and I sat with them, we thought that was a simple, that was a done deal.
Right.
We definitely were going to be involved in.
Absolutely.
Things changed since then, too, conference calls and the whole.
Yes. We've been having lots of conference calls. Well, okay, thank you. Hopefully, we'll keep going. All right, Brian, good to, good to talk to you, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Shall we adjourn? I forgot a motion on the table to adjourn, Mr. Barrett, I'll make this second.
Okay.
The adjourn.
All in favor.
Okay.
Jim, you take care.
Thank you, Brian, thank you very much.
Okay, we off the phone?
Yep.